Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, March 11th, 2021, beginning at 7:07 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the Commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the Commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the Commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular Commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Anybody wishing to speak on general topics this evening? Okay. Because we'll get into the specific discussion items in just a moment. Okay. Next is the Commission's public hearing where we will receive oral or written comments regarding a request for a zone classification change located at FM 2351 and Beamer Road, consisting of approximately 159 acres to change from community shopping center and industrial to planned unit development. The 159 acres is described more fully in the agenda, but comprised, it is comprised of three phases as follows. Phase one, 14.9 acres. Phase two, 34.3 acres. And phase three, 110.5 acres. Aubrey, could you please provide the staff summary?
Yes, sir. So what you have before you tonight is a proposal for a planned unit development. Just Panhandle PUD is kind of a nickname for it, which this PUD would establish the development guidelines for the 159-plus acres that are identified in the backup material. The application is conceptual in nature, meaning that these would establish the guidelines and then the, as the properties developed, it would be platted and they would come back for specific site plan approvals from the Commission for the individual sites. The PUD includes its own regulation matrix, a permitted use table, and parking regulations in addition to screening, landscaping, and setback requirements. Elevations for most of the buildings planned for PH2 were included. We did not get any elevations for PH1 or PH3. All the allowed, the PUD describes that all the allowed uses in the cities, PUD, allowed under agriculture, CSC, light industrial, and industrial are allowed as permitted uses, including additional uses, food and beverage manufacturing, healthcare and social assistance, and accommodation and food services. And that's, there was a, one of the backup items was a comparison showing what the developers proposing and then what city, current city ordinances are. So you have that information and I believe they have a presentation for you tonight.
Great, great. If you're ready with, you have a presentation, we'd love to see it. And again, if you could step to the podium and you could state your name again for the record, and you can wear your mask because of social distancing, you can either wear it or not, it's at your discretion.
Okay.
And as Jeff so kindly asked earlier, and I'll remind you, if you could have the microphones pointed at your mouth, that'd be great.
I hope it is. Okay. Thank you for having us. My name is Dan Rucker. I'm here in attendance tonight with Ms. Stephanie Kennedy. Our company is Coastal Bend Property Development. Stephanie is Coastal Bend Engineering. And one of the other applicants here with us, the broker representing the, I call it the Buckner Track. It's located, it's a 5.4 acre piece of property. It's in Panhandle PUD 1. That's Kelly Hutchinson's with Colliers is the listing agent for that, that track. Again, I want to thank you for hearing us tonight. Our purpose here this evening is, is kind of twofold. And before I get into it, there's a whole lot to cover. I mean, there's just a lot. And so I don't want to skate anything. I don't want to go too fast, but I want to attend to any kind of questions that you may have. But this next September will be the 20th anniversary since we opened the doors at Timber Creek Golf Club. And in that 20 years, we've got to know all of our neighbors. And many of them have shared with us over time their expectations and, and their intentions. We, additionally, we have liaised with and we have interactions with all the time, all the, virtually all the stakeholders in the Panhandle area, including obviously Denbury, the pipeline right of ways, pipeline interest, the utility companies. So there's really, I can honestly say, there's really not an entity that operates, does business, or has a stake in the Panhandle out there that we don't either have on speed dial or regularly communicate with. So, so in that, the Panhandle itself is kind of an interesting area. I recognize that in some of my narrative. I tried to explain in that narrative what, what kind of the dilemma and the advantages are of the Panhandle. So without reciting what you've probably already read, I'm sure, I'm going to ask for questions pretty soon, but, but there is a lot. There is a lot because it's a large area and it's a large area that mars with different makeup and characteristics as you enter the city limits at the hard corner of Beamer Road. And that dramatically transforms as you hit the intersection of Hope Village. And then again, it's changes and mars as you go through the intersection of Blackhawk. So as we're looking at the exhibit over here, the, just to give you the particulars about, I'll, I'll start going backwards from three, two, one, because we're starting at the city limit line. So at the city limit line, at that corner, we were able to successfully complete the second phase of Beamer Road in conjunction with Harris County and, and partially with the city's assistance after literally years of negotiation with the county. It was not so much the undertaking of the paving limits and the, and the, and the lane improvements themselves, as much as it was their original intention to take a private eight-inch water line that used to be on outside the city limits in what is the Beamer Family Track that, that comes out of the city and went along Beamer Road and then crossed back across the street where we brought it back across and were in a cooperative deal, a three-way deal with the City of Friendswood, Denbury, and ourselves for the water line waterworks facility that you'll see in another exhibit. What we were able to do after lobbying the county and convincing them that was in Harris County taxpayers' best interest to, instead of moving that private water line even further away from the city, was bring it back into the city's limits, put it where it belonged on our side in, in a, in a, in a water line easement that we dedicated for that purpose. And so at no cost to the city, we were able to accomplish a trunk line water that comes from the shell station across the street that then comes within our tract and then at that point terminated at the city's tank point for the city of Houston's 24-inch water line that comes across the platted road. Subsequent to that, we were able to cooperate with the city on about a 50-50 split that additionally in a water line easement that we dedicated to be able to take that water line and extend it the, the rest of the way north across the existing Turkey Creek Bridge and were able to tie that back into another water line that we had previously laid and installed for the production of that water line system. So in effect, for about half the cost of the segment between the platted road and the creek, the, the city was able to accomplish with us a complete eight-inch trunk line that tied in the entire loop and now has made water available to the northern portion of the Panhandle that, that terminates. And there, and we've just handed you a little additional exhibit and then we can talk about it if you want, but there are, are players out there right now that are presenting plans and are intending to extend that water line probably to its termination point, ultimate termination point at some, at some point in the near future. So Panhandle PH3A, B, and C are, if you've noticed lately, the perimeter cattle fencing has just gone back up. Two breeder bulls and, and heifers have just been reintroduced to the property. And that piece of property is still sitting in its agriculturally exempt condition, primarily waiting on some finishing touches that we are in a process of planning right now. TexDOT has control of a drainage easement left over from when the 2351 went wide years ago. It, 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 it intrudes into the property at a certain distance before it terminates. We want to improve the channel that comes underneath 2351 through about the midpoint at, at PH3A. We want to widen it and straighten it, and that's going to require some relocating abandonment and replacing that easement. That is going to be subsequent to finally cleaning up some of the buried infrastructure on the abandoned retired pipelines and dodging one plugged well to be able to do that. But that property is, is out of all the remainder of that piece of property, has the least impact with floodplain, enjoys the hard corner of the intersection, and is, and has potentially obviously its highest and best use and most productivity value. And it's, and, and, and that is, has no immediate hard plans for that in, at this time. It also is greatly dependent on, in addition to the channel improvements that we need to make, we were intending to make those coincident with the Turkey Creek project, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with. That is a 50-50 investment by Harris County Flood Control and the Corps of Engineers where Turkey Creek will be channelized and widened and will come across the entire top portion of PH3C and is scheduled to terminate at the confluence of Clear Creek, which is in the middle of Timber Creek Golf Club. That project has been delayed primarily because of COVID. It was being fast-tracked before the, the virus set this program aside. And Harris County Flood Control and, and the Corps working remotely have still been chipping at it. They tell us that the project is still imminent. They expect the H&amp;H calculations to be prepared about June, that were due March a year ago. And to some final determination, they still call the project imminent. If in fact that project happens, a lot of things happen in addition to the benefit of, of an improved floodplain elevation within the entire Panhandle area, but also where Harris County has been hamstrung for years to try to install, finish the planned improvements of Beamer Road from Dixie Farm all the way through to Bay Area Boulevard. One of the problems that they've had is a heavy cluster of pipelines and a network of those pipelines that gather at the Turkey Creek Bridge. And by virtue of Harris County Flood Control actually performing the, the Turkey Creek project, that would automatically trigger the installation of a new bridge within Harris County Precinct 1 would be, then be able to tie into either side of it. So it may actually be flood control and not Harris County roads that actually ends up curing that problem. The middle section PH3B is less encumbered by pipelines than, than 3C above it, but it still has in it some old abandoned infrastructure, lots of stuff that we still have to remove. And we're in discussions with Denbury now about what they're going to clean up and what they're going to leave us with as far as the abandoned in place infrastructure and, and removal of those old pipelines. The only two active oil wells that I know of left in the city limits of Friendswood are in the area 3C, which those wells are currently shut in, but they are live and they intend to bring those back onboard for production. So it's, it's the front door, it's the, it's, it's the, I guess the cherry on top, but it is not quite ready for prime time and it's a work in process and we are proceeding to try to cure all those issues. PH2 is where we are at now and it's hooked up, ready to go. It's, is, everything is, is established in the way of trunk lines, driveways, accesses, and utilities. There's some minor extensions of, of utilities, but the trunk lines and the, and the major utilities are all in place. The detention is all accounted for and we've initiated the Industry Park subdivision is also incorporated into this PUD to allow a more flexible mix of uses in that existing subdivision and to marry the rest of the project with us. And that is our main focal point of what we intend to come out of the chute with next. At the, at the entrance of PH2 at the Hope Village Road intersection, that driveway permit has just been achieved. It's a, we, we asked for that permit almost two years ago. We asked for three permits along 2351 at the same time. One was for the new, I'll call it the Water Plant Road, that is the main entry into Industry Park that terminates back at the city's number two regional water plant. The second one was for a driveway actually in the PH3 that I think we got first. And the, and the, and the permit that I thought would have been a slam dunk, that we would have gotten before anything else, was the intersection for Hope Village for a new Timber Creek Golf Club driveway, which we've just got, I think, in about the last 30 or 45 days. So that's, that's the physical piece that we've been waiting on. And then with the, with acceptance and, and your consideration of this PUD, we would intend to proceed the project as soon as feasible. PH1 is the area that I talked about in the narrative, that if there was going to be any consideration for a residential program, that that might be something that the, that the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council may want to consider. We have since withdrawn the, the residential portion on the application primarily because we, the, the prospect that is entertaining development in that site and the few people that we've been romanced with in the past did not materialize and could not furnish us any kind of hard and fast plans to present to you. And I, without belaboring the issue, it's, the idea of another apartment project in the city's limits meets with all kinds of different opinions and reactions to, to, I'm not going to belabor the issue, but it has, we've been approached and I can personally see how proximity to a rather attractive golf course and a, and a, and a well-maintained county park might serve well for a residential component, but it would have to be the right residential component. So at some point in the future, that may avail itself and want to appear for you then, but we have since withdrawn that request and the other portions of the PH1 PUD and the components of it still exist.
Is there anything else that you think you would add to that right now?
So that's just a lot of cover over a lot of detail that you've been presented with. I think for now, I would probably ask for just questions about any specifics within the contents of the PUD application itself that we could address for you.
Right. I, I think the easiest thing might be rather than, and ask you questions at two different times is I'll see if there's any public comment at this point, and then when we get into this as an action item, then we'll ask you to kindly come back up and we'll get our questions in then.
Okay, sure, sure.
Since everybody's been introduced, I will, I'll just make sure, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for or against this zone change or this request to a PUD at this time as part of our public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held Thursday, February 25th, 2021?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Shows to be unanimous. Okay. Next on our agenda are action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the Commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the Commission present at such Commission meetings. Our first action item tonight is consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for Friendswood Shopping Center to be located at 106 Whispering Pines Avenue. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir. You have to forgive me a little bit. I'm a little dead in the water without my network, my backup material. But this is a new shopping center that's proposed at 106 Whispering Pines. The property owner currently, there, there's an old, it used, it used to be a former church that was on the property that TBH Holdings bought and converted from a church into office buildings. And then they subdivided the property, so the plaque came before you, and now they're applying to build a new strip center on the property. The property is owned downtown district. There weren't any remaining comments as far as meeting the minimum requirements, and we were hoping the applicant would be here tonight, but they don't have anybody here. So.
That would have been helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. We have, so that will go into our discussion. Thank you, Aubrey. Starting with you, Rich, any, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm disappointed the applicant's not here. I had a couple of questions. I guess lacking them, Aubrey, I'm going to direct them toward you and then you can, you're always allowed to say, "I don't know."
Okay.
So the parking space requirement that was calculated, I assume that includes the existing building, right? I mean, they are being lumped together in terms of the requirement for the parking? It's not just the new stuff.
Let me pull up that site plan real quick.
I would hope so, since this land is going to have to cover both, but I'm just kind of going through the formalities of that.
Sorry about that.
They, we, we did figure the parking and the landscaping, so it's a, it's a shared development, but it's technically two lots, two different buildings, but we did combine all of the, the parking, the landscaping calculations as if it's one comprehensive site.
And, and that's the right way to do it, yeah. I just, I just wanted to make sure this doesn't cover the new parking and now there's no parking for the existing building? And, and so they're going to be sharing that?
No, and the numbers are, it's 4.5 spaces per thousand square feet for the medical portion, and then we figured four spaces per thousand feet, four thousand square feet for the retail portion.
And the retail is about 10,000 square feet and the other was about five, remember? I can't get it to come up on my computer.
It is the new.
Oh, you've got it up there.
Yes, the new building, they don't have any end users right now, but their intent is to have some uses that is complementary to the medical office, coffee shop, you know, donut place, that type thing.
Sure.
But they don't have anybody specific.
Understood. I, I, it was really a formality question. I assume you guys were on top of that, but I just, since this is a little different in terms of it's partially already constructed and partially not, the parking needs to cover both, obviously.
Yeah, so she does have it pulled up and it's, it's broken out by clinic and then the retail building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, of course it does. Okay. No, you're good. You're good. Okay. There, can you back up that, that picture a little bit, if you don't mind? Because I can't get it on my computer. For some reason, my computer's being grumpy. It has all the things I don't want to see and the things I do want to see don't come up. Do we know in, what's in that upper left-hand blank space? The parking is well delineated, the two buildings are well delineated, but do we know what the plan is for that?
It's just green space.
It's, right now, it's just a grassy area. Is it planned just to stay like that? So they'll have a little bit of green somewhere.
Yeah.
It's kind of nice, I guess you won't see it, but, okay. They didn't give much detail on the sidewalk. I presume they're going to be putting in a downtown district-type brick paver sidewalk?
No, they don't front 518, so it's just a six-foot concrete sidewalk and a 15-foot landscape buffer.
So we don't require it if it's not on 518?
Right.
Now, are they going to replace the existing sidewalk? Are they using the, the, there is an existing one that's kind of right up on the curb. It's kind of congested, that whole thing. And it wasn't clear to me on the drawing. It does call it out there, it just doesn't say whether it's new or existing.
And I don't think the existing's six foot at all, right?
It's probably not six feet, no.
I think they call it that seven feet. I think they're going to have, if I remember correctly.
So presumably that's new?
Yes. Yeah, because I think what's there may be only like barely four feet if it is.
Yeah. The, the existing sidewalk was shoehorned in because there was existing telephone poles right in the middle of it and it's, it's, it's not, I'm not sure how they're going to get around that as well, but, and this will just of course cover their property.
They have some sidewalk details here, so I'm assuming it's all new.
Yes, sir.
Did I miss it?
If you look at the, if you look at the, it looks like stone pavers, I believe it says seven feet, you zoom in on the very top window.
Yeah, it, it does say seven feet and it shows pictures of pavers, doesn't necessarily mean that they're doing that.
I mean, they can, but I mean, the minimum, the minimum is the six foot. Yeah, there's the seven foot label right there.
Yeah.
Well, one of them should say seven foot monument sign. I wonder if they flipped the numbers.
The, there's the sign right there below it.
Okay. But yes, it is a new six-foot concrete sidewalk. It's on, it's probably not on this page, it's on their civil details.
Okay.
That it's going to be installed.
So, so, so what I think I'm hearing is that they're going to rip up the old one and put in a new one? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, this site plan just shows what is going to be there. The details of how it's going to get there is on a different.
Understand, but what, what is going to be there is not what's currently there, but a new sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I noticed that they only have one dumpster, one existing dumpster behind the medical facility, and they're putting in a bunch of new facilities. So I guess the idea is that all the trash from the new facility will fit into that existing dumpster? If you back it out, you'll see what I mean.
Yes, sir, it's a double dumpster.
So one double dumpster on the one side, and so everything comes from, so they're going to be ferrying trash across the parking lot and all that to get there.
But, but since you're on that topic, let me.
Yes, sir.
One of my questions, it fits in well here, is that a new dumpster enclosure? Because that shows up on the drawings.
Yes, sir, that's, that's going to be new.
Okay, that's what, okay. You, I thought.
Yeah, that's good, okay.
Okay, my bad then, I misunderstood.
I had one comment that was going to be helpful to the developer. They, they have two drawings that are similar. One shows the landscaping, one shows the parking. The parking's called out on both of them. It's incorrect on the second one. They're, they're inconsistent and you count the number of spaces. So this one says 12. If you go to the next drawing, it says 14. So I was just going to tell them they have a typo.
Yes, sir, I've already redlined that on their hard copies.
Well done. I knew you'd be ahead of me, Becky. That's good. I, I noticed that they have holly trees, which I think are legal everywhere. I think there's like 36 of them or something. There's a lot of them. And they're consistent and they like holly trees. I, I personally like trees that give shade. And I was going to appeal to the developer to see if they had anything that they could put in that would actually grow a little taller than 15 feet when it's fully mature. I know when we talked to Sal about a different property, he said, "Yeah, that's an easy change," but I personally prefer, I like shade in Friendswood. It gets damn hot and to the extent we can, especially along the sidewalk, if we want a walkable city, I think we'd be better. So if you wouldn't mind passing my request, it's, I don't have any teeth in this request, it's more of just a general request, but it would be nice to have something that gets up a little taller. And I'll leave that to you, what, what that would be. Commissioner Matranga and I were just out there a little while ago. We saw that there's a very large tree that using our, combining our horticultural knowledge, we figured out it might be an oak. The, but it's, I'm presuming it's going, going to be removed. I didn't see a drawing that showed which drawings, which trees were going to be removed, but it was a nice-looking tree. It looks like it's in the second parking lot, so I'm, and it's not showing up there. So I'm, it's an unfortunate casualty, I guess, of the development.
Yeah, it looks like it's about right there in the middle of that new parking lot.
Yeah, it looks like it's in the, on this drawing, the lower section of, of what says 14 is actually 12 spaces. And I was just, I was going to confirm that with the owner. 14 is actually 12 spaces, and I was just, I was gonna confirm that with the owner, but I think I already know the answer to that, that it's unfortunate that another one of our very nice trees is gonna be a casualty here.
Yes, sir, they do have some mitigation trees for the ones they're taking out, I think there was two of them, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, that, that tree, I don't, I'm not smart enough to know if it's like four trees or one tree, it's looked like it had twisted trunks and such like that, but. Okay, well, in general, I feel like this is a pretty nice-looking development, I think I have, I have no major issues, I've just had some more just clarifying questions, so I'm pleased that they're putting in a new sidewalk, the sidewalk that they have there is not very, well, it won't pass muster, so, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Hinckley?
You know, I was gonna bring up the question on trees also, there was also a, a big tree on the, on the side of the building, which I think is getting removed for the dumpster. But honestly, that was, that was probably my biggest concern with the site, was just just a few trees being removed, and they're not really, not really that, that huge of a tree, but, but they are trees, so. I do see the sidewalk, I see the details on the sidewalk, so, other than that, I don't really have any issues with this, the site, so, I'm good.
Commissioner Mann?
So, I thought that the, and I was hoping they were gonna be here, because I had a couple of questions, but I thought that the color rendering looked gorgeous, the building looked great, that was all from the parking lot looking in. My concern is kinda the placement of the new building, and I'm assuming, I was kinda, what is the reason for the orientation, because it's out towards the road, so I'm assuming that's probably for that drive-through, easy in and out, yeah, that's, looks great, but that's the front of it, the back of it now is a flat wall, so as you drive into the downtown district, into Friendswood, you're looking at a flat wall. On the closest side to the road is also a big wall covering electro equipment, so there will be no landscaping done on that side, it's, it's got about three and a half feet from the back of the building to the next property, so there's really nothing you can do on there, especially once you talk about the electro equipment fitting within that spot, and, you know, it would be nice if you could kinda set that back a little bit off of the road, and so as you're driving in, you could see it, so just kinda curious as to the reasoning for the orientation. Some of my concerns with that is that large wall, also closing it off for the next property on, to the upper northeast side of that. Once they start building, if they put something in there, now they have a big wall right on the edge of the property line there that goes all the way out to the street, some of our downtown district comments are that we want shared parking, we want it to flow from spot to spot and not cut each other off, and that, that kinda goes against some of our downtown district ideas. And then, you know, some of the questions about sliding the electrical equipment to the backside, or some, the other tree stuff, I understand, we're trying to get things done, but, you know, the dumpster where it is, I kinda was looking for some insight, if you put the dumpster in the, in the green space, or somewhere in that green space, you can leave that big tree where the dumpster's going now, and then you could have it where it's actually convenient for both buildings to get to the dumpster, but with all that green space there, you have the ability to slide the building back, make it an L shape or something, so just some of the concerns I had to make this the best it could be for entering Friendswood Downtown District, that was it.
Let me make sure I heard something, I was, because I thought I saw it a little differently. So were you saying that the electrical equipment was on this side facing Whispering Pines? Or on the back?
It's right there where the, where the mouse is now, so it's, it's the closest to the street.
Okay, I understand.
So as there's a three and a half foot space, barely enough room, and then again, there's electrical equipment with a wall that goes on it, and it's so tight that on the drawing, if you, if you like zoom in, the, the electrical wall actually sticks out into the other property, so, on my computer, I guess. It must be on.
Yeah, it's an eight-foot-high laser-cut metal screen wall to cover electrical equipment from street view.
So as you're entering Friendswood Downtown District, you have the big metal wall there, and then beyond it, there's really not much room for anything to go either with the fire escape egresses, it's, you know, you can see it's the, it's the distance of a door, so three and a half feet, four feet.
May have been the landscape plan that, that maybe pulled that up. Yeah, I think the landscape drawing was a little bit off.
I guess that's the one I was looking at, where that wall, you can see it kinda goes over a little bit, because it's so tight right there, and I'm sure that's to make room for parking and everything, just a concern, if you want to uphold the downtown district shared parking and moving around, in their defense, the building just on the other side kinda closes them off a little bit, so we're asking them to do, or we would be asking them to do something that we didn't make someone else do.
Aubrey and Becky, you think that's just a drawing anomaly, obviously they're not installing anything on somebody else's property, right?
Yeah, it, I mean, it'll have to be on their property, it was, it's three feet, nine and a half inches from the building to the property line.
And this is downtown district where you have zero setbacks, it's the only place that we allow zero setbacks?
Yes, sir.
We didn't get a rendering of what the back of the building would look like, because what, what you're pointing out is important, that is going to be the thing people see when they're driving in, they're not gonna, because of the orientation of the building, it's, it's a little different than what we normally see, I think, good catch.
And in addition to the driving in, which is gonna, they can't do anything with that metal wall there that's on the roadside, but in addition to that, the next people that build next to them have a wall right there that they, they have nothing that they can do, kinda limits them a little bit.
It was the intent behind downtown district is to have building to building to building, and, so, I'm personally okay with that, but when, before there's a building there, that's what you're gonna see when you're coming in, that's my concern, like, like yours.
Till that next property's developed, it could look nicer.
Oh, so you think when the next property's developed, they'll be back-to-back and be six feet from each other there?
Yeah, it would normally would.
Out to the road.
But no requirement to do that.
Right, right.
Okay, right.
It would then alleviate a lot of my concerns then for the next people.
If in fact it happens, it may not for 30 years, and it might be a whole different development.
Sure.
No, it's a good point, though, but it does seem to meet the requirement.
But if someone else does that, they need to make sure that those back egress has enough room for somebody to get out, assuming somebody else builds to the lot line, which they are legally allowed to do, they can't count on the next property to.
Well, there has to be a minimum 10-foot separation between buildings, so the next the next property owner won't be able to.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So by putting your land on the thing, you guess, you can affect the other guys? Hmm, I didn't know that.
Yes, fire separation's gonna be 10 feet between the buildings, and then the rear exits do have a required landing, and it's, it's only a couple of square feet, basically, but you do have to have a step down when you go out the back door, so they are gonna be right, right on the edge of their property line.
Right.
Originally, their design had, had nothing on the rear, so we did get with them, and so there's some plantings, there's that laser-cut metal decorative wall that's gonna cover up all the electrical equipment, we talked about them shifting it back into that, the open green space, but the owners were kinda adamant that they weren't entirely sure what they wanted to do with that space yet, so they didn't want to move the building, and obviously for the drive-through, that was their other purpose, for that building being situated the way it is.
Yeah, I assumed it was up there for that drive-through, but that was just a.
Yeah, and they do have, they've talked about the old church that they bought and renovated, ultimately that coming down and them continuing their development, which, like I said, they don't, they don't know what they want to do entirely, so they don't want to take up that corner.
Hmm.
The corner, yes. I mean, if y'all have more questions or suggestions, we can always encourage them to come speak to the commission at the next meeting.
You know, the, the question on the placement of the building got me looking at something, and I'm not sure, that something on the drawings may not be off, if you look at the existing building and the new addition, and just the offsets between the two in the back, back of the property, I'd just, I'd just like to ask if they verify that that's, that's correct, something just looks dimensionally slightly off to me. And that's just a verification to make sure measurements are correct.
Commissioner?
I don't have, I don't have a way of measuring that right now, but it just, something's not looking right to me.
Commissioner Clark?
I was just wondering if it's possible to get a, a rendering of a street view looking, you know, up, up that way, it's, it's my perception, especially with developed landscape, which of course, the building won't be delivered with, but with developed landscape, it's in excess of 60 feet off the, the right-of-way, it might not be a problem to me.
You won't be driving up to a blank wall is what you're wondering about?
Yeah, right, yeah. So anyway, it's worth looking at, my other, my other concern was the trees, it seemed like it would be a relatively easy thing to, to save them, you know, such as they are, but I don't know if they've considered that, or, or just went the straightforward route, but, that, those were my only comments.
It is, I mean, all my questions have already been asked by everybody before me, but it does seem like we do have a, there's a lot of questions we would love to ask the applicant, understand why, what their thoughts are, and it's hard to do that with the empty chair here. There's, there's a motion to approve that's already out there at this point, but.
I am happy to change my motion to a motion to table, until such time we can meet with the developer, perhaps at our next meeting, hopefully, and, and get some of the comments and questions that were brought up, I thought mine were fairly minor and I could live with them, but some of the ones that were brought up by the other commissioners, I agree, are, are serious enough that we'd like to get some resolution to that, especially the building placement and the view of the building from this, from the, from the main entrance streetway.
We could, and we could get the list of y'all's questions, and, or let them watch the video and be prepared to answer y'all's questions at the next meeting.
Yeah, so I guess.
Are you formally revising your?
Can I, well, how do I do that, I just say, "I would like to revise my motion to approve to a motion to table," is that, let me pretend that's so said, then.
Second.
Fair, is the same person at the second? Nope, okay.
Well.
That's all right, that's all right, just making sure I'm not getting in trouble here.
Technically a new motion, right?
Okay, so before us right now, we have a motion to table this item to, you talking about to our next meeting, or did you say? Is that, no, I wanna make sure.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm making sure Mary Kay's not gonna put me in, 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 in zoning prison here, yes, that's a motion to table, till the next meeting.
Okay.
Where we can talk to the.
And that matters?
And that'll be my second, yeah, and hopefully we can give them the list, and it should be pretty easy.
You can watch the movie.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, our final action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to city council regarding a request for a zone classification change located along FM 2351 and Beamer Road, consisting of approximately 159 acres to change from community shopping center and industrial to planned unit development. The 159 acres is described more fully in the agenda, but it's comprised of three phases as follows, PH1, 14.9 acres, PH2, 34.3 acres, and PH3, 110.5 acres. Is there a motion?
Okay, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, I'm just gonna give you another chance, in case there was anything else that you wanted to add.
Not at this time.
Okay, okay. And applicant, if, do you have anything else you would like to add that you've thought of since your prior remarks? If you could step to the podium, please, sir.
Thank you again. Witnessing what just occurred with the shopping center just then, is exactly what this PUD is intended to cure. What, I, I want you to imagine, if we could put that first exhibit up, again, just the first page up there, is that the, the, in, in PH3, again, we, front, back, and all the sides are the, are the single owner and user in, in that, in that section of the planned PUD. Imagine a, a boundaried, landscaped, dramatic entry treatment at the points of entry, and imagine that that's the wrapping on the box, inside that box, it's very busy, it's going to be businesses and uses that maybe won't be the similar types of operations and, and businesses, but they will be cohesively planned and situated and gathered and accessed by private driveways, private utilities, except where the city wants those utilities, but all will be in dedicated easements, it'll have every attention and, and concern addressed as far as fire and emergency services, but what you'll see on the drive-by out on Beamer Road and on 2351 will be dramatic points of entry, heavily landscaped, and landscaped around the entire perimeter, and then those, and landscape features would then be coming into the inside, so what you'll be seeing on the drive-by is something that is very attractive, but you won't really have a clue about what's going on, on the inside, and so what this does, it gives us the ability to exercise a program that we've already established in industry park, in that it's an association, it's an association that everyone is a member, that all has pays annual facilities, just like you do in your homeowners' association, this is our property owners' association, that will be paying their annual fees and any special assessments necessary to maintain the aesthetics around the perimeter, but also to maintain the interior infrastructures that are private. So, it's, the dilemma in trying to figure out how to take and situate a, a ladder development use on an inside property tract that is already adjacent to existing facilities, especially when the dilemma is retrofitting or demolition and then repurposing properties, this is, what this is for is to develop something that is, that is new, that is fresh, that's cohesive, that has strategy development planned from the beginning to the end, and then, and then making sure that that is screened, that it attends to the landscape concerns, that it attends to the aesthetic issues, and that, and it as importantly, if not most importantly, addresses all the fire and emergency services that are gonna be necessary. So witnessing that, to me, makes it easier to understand why we would want to be able to present a cohesive plan to the commission, and so that we could address these things and give us a, an entire palette that we can plan, and comprehensively plan a, a, a flowing community, and not be bothering you every single time for a variance that I feel like you would almost assuredly regret for, for these kinds of circumstances. But I'm here to address any questions that y'all might have about anything, we've got, we've got more pictures, there's other PowerPoints, we've got some other materials that we can share with you, it's just I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
No, thank you, thank you very much, and you might, I, I'm almost certain you might as well just stay right there.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Commissioner Sassen?
So I wanted to start out saying, Mr. Rucker, I appreciate the things you have done in Friendswood historically, there's a lot of very nice things that have been directly attributable to your efforts, and, and I, I, actually, my daughter lives in one of the houses in one of your subdivisions, right on the Pearland-Friendswood border, and.
God bless her.
But P&amp;Z has been criticized in the past for, for using, over-embracing the use of PUDs, I think they need to be used sparingly, and, and not as a method of circumventing existing city codes and ordinances, although I feel like I can defend the times we've used PUDs in the past, because of particular codes.
because of particular codes that had to be, were onerous for specific local circumstances. This PUD doesn't seem to have the detail in it. There was a lot of description on past drainage. There's a lot of description about the water system and all the stuff that's gone in in the past to try to make this facility, this area, more marketable and developable. But there's not a lot of detail on what the plans are for what you're actually going to put on these properties. And so what you've put together, in my opinion, looks like, maybe we want to build 100-foot buildings, so let's allow 100-foot buildings. Maybe we want to do various things. And so you have, basically, you've relaxed all the normal codes that everyone else complies with and says, and put out something that is going to be potentially very, very bad. Now, I happen to personally trust you, but as one of our former commissioners Brett Banfield would say on almost every meeting, he'd say, "The zoning goes with the land, not with the developer." And so something horrible could be happening tomorrow, you could be run over by a beer truck, and somebody else says, "You know what I want to do? I want to use the limit of all of these PUD exemptions, and now I'm going to build something that nobody wants at the front of Friendswood." And I know you have specific ideas on what you want, but they're not delineated in the plan. And what the plan just says is, "I want to have free rein in some ways here." So my concern is that the proposed planned unit development does not lay out the future development plan so much as it asks for relief from city statutes and requirements for which the rest of Friendswood must comply. It asks for specific exemptions from the existing setback requirements, building height limits, buffer areas, parking requirements, lighting requirements, CSC boundaries, and setbacks from all non-producing petroleum wells. I have no doubt that exempting these properties from having to comply with city codes will reduce the cost of development and give the applicant a competitive advantage over other Friendswood properties, but that's not the intent of PUD. It also rewrites the permitted use table to allow many other alternative uses from the current zoning of industrial and CSC in case they fall into what is not actually shown. It's an undefined future plan. And although I may approve some of these things and think they're a good idea, without knowing, I don't. The idea that you could put two non-complimentary services right next to each other is something that we don't want potentially. And so it's basically, there's just, in my opinion, not enough definition of the plan. There's a lot of definition of what's gone on in the past, and so I am sympathetic to the difficulties developing the existing properties. If there is a request for a zone change for one of the tracks to accommodate a specific development opportunity, I will be sympathetic. However, I intend to oppose this PUD as being too broad and with no defined plan other than relief from existing city requirements.
Could I address some of that?
You may.
Okay. So the 100-foot height requirement that you're speaking of was specifically intended for PH1 in the event that a higher-than-mid-rise apartment or condo developer availed with a plan. That's not necessary.
Well, it's in your application.
It is in the application, and we are willing to withdraw that portion from the application. You made another statement about parking, and I understand completely. You might also share with me the idea that you can spend a lot of money to make a parking lot less ugly, but you're never going to make a parking lot pretty. So the idea, for instance, I would commend what Brendan Smurl did at High Point, at the insurance building there on 2351. All the parking is screened behind the building and covered at the same time. Much of the plans that we are working on right now would accommodate that exact same scheme. Now, I understand that you would have concerns about knowing exactly what was going on a particular track.
Or even generally, but yes.
Yes. But what this does, it allows us to develop a cohesive plan with confidence that we can actually accomplish the plan. It is premature to come to you with specific drawings on the bigger track because of the surface encumbrance, because of the issues that we still have to clean up on it, because of it being dependent, finally, on the Turkey Creek project, where the other tracks are not dependent on the Turkey Creek project at all. PH1 and 2 are accommodated, or at least don't have the floodplain issues or the surface issues that exist in PH3. To be able to come to you with a specific site plan and the development of the entire 157 acres, frankly, would mean that I would probably have dozens of trips.
Respectfully, sir, there is no plan of what's going in. It's just asking for exemptions from existing codes. But, and there's a lot of talk about what you might do, and some of it sounds beautiful. But that doesn't mean it's necessarily what's going to happen. And if I took a negative look at this, I'm now allowing you to do something that I may not want to have in my city of Friendswood. And so without any kind of definition on what's going forward, I, you may talk all afternoon, all evening, but I can't support this.
What you might consider something you would not want to allow in the city of Friendswood, I've tried to share with you that the circumstances that surround the big track, PH3, it is boundaried on all three other corners at that intersection by unincorporated Harris County. Now, we could try to force something of a grand scale that might be exceptional by comparison, but it's still going to be immediately adjacent to and across the street from whatever is going to happen in that virtually unrestricted area. What I'm expressing to you is that we can accommodate a market and we can invite a market, but we never have been that good at just conjuring up or fabricating a market. So there is going to be some highest and best use, some probable use, at its highest point. If there were going to be a large dock-half distribution facility on that piece of property, it could happen. All I could guarantee you is that it would be the prettiest one you ever saw. So in effect, to address and alleviate your concerns, the idea that we don't know if we can cohesively make this plan, if we have to come back and ask for conditional variances time after time after time. So what I need to better direction with, and what we probably need to try to accomplish, is where, if any point, is that we can tune this thing in or fine-tune it to the point to where we can alleviate the concerns you might have without showing you absolute elevations in a particular user that might be on that property. So, I mean, I understand your concern and it's founded.
We need, we have zero, pretty much zero definition on what the plans are other than it will require less parking and more lighting on the edges than currently allowed. The codes have been put together with some thought on different uses and how much parking is needed in certain areas. But what we're saying here is, we're going to go over those and say, "We don't need as much parking." And I'll need a compelling argument to show why we don't need as much parking for a particular service.
The PowerPoint to one more sheet, I think, okay. Can y'all see the, that exhibit? Let's blow it up a little bit. This is just going to be an example. This is not going to show you. So I'm going to be looking at the A buildings that are to the right of the new Timber Creek entry, okay? In front of those buildings are initial proposed parking spaces.
Okay.
The green spaces to either sides of those are for expanded parking should the end user show up and need more parking. In addition to the available parking that would be available to that on the end. I'm not saying that, well, I am saying, I don't like parking lots.
Sure.
You've already established earlier how they bounce a radiated heat and they send every drop of rainwater straight into an overburdened watershed. So-
But we do put parking requirements in for the rest of the businesses in Friendswood for a reason.
We, exactly, and exactly, in the-
And I don't know, because of the lack of definition, whether there's a valid reason to reduce the number of parking. I'm willing to listen to it, but I need to know a reason why-
I want to draw your attention to an existing building. The company is called E Squared, and it's going to be over in Industry Park, over to the far top right of the picture. It's the very corner on the cul-de-sac street. And you can, that business there, and you can see that, look at their parking lot. It looks like it's, they've been compounded, and it is. That, that's 38 parking spots. And by the most strict definition that the city required for the production of that building, it was 31 parking spots required. But because the owner-occupant of that building could not give us any clear assurance of who the sublet tenant was going to be or what kind of use that business was going to be, we burdened him with additional over and above parking spaces, so at least that would be a consideration because he was going to own separately that property.
But the other alternative was to put in not enough parking, which would be allowed under this PUD, and then put in something where people are parking on the street or parking on someone else's parking lot-
That's true.
And you have disputes.
That's true.
And so that's why we don't, we have rules, and if we want exemptions to rules, we need a reason for them.
So what I'm asking you to consider and decide if you could ever accept or not is the fact that the property owners' association, I'm not saying that this is going to be a police state, but it will be strictly enforced. And so that this association, just like your homeowner's association, will have the power of levy and lien.
So what you're saying is, this association that is yet to be defined would replace the city in terms of policing itself.
The association is defined and does exist, and these would be add-ons to the association, but I did not make those covenants a part of this PUD application. And yes, there are things that the city will not enforce in subdivisions all over town that homeowners' associations can enforce, just like this property owners' association.
But they have a minimum standard that you would no longer need to comply with, and it just makes me nervous.
It does make you nervous. It makes me nervous to think that we might let somebody fly with something and is the city's minimum standard going to be enough at that time? Is, are you absolutely sure that by meeting minimum standards required by the city, we'll always serve those purposes?
No, but what I am confident of is if we relax those standards, it's something much less, we probably are going to get in trouble.
I understand.
And so what we're allowing you to do, or again, if something bad happened to you, whoever owns the property to do is, may not be in line with what the city really wants and needs, and the rest of the city is complying with. And so that's my concern.
So parking, numbers of parkings per square foot, heights on buildings, are not nearly the main, most important factor as it is, absolutely. The co-mingling and the cohesive mix of uses that we want to make sure that we can accomplish in this application. We are more than willing to, if there's a way to avert a flat-out denial and to work through the issues that cause concern and modify those in the process, where we would be removing some issues that would accommodate your concerns, we are more than willing to try to work with you on that.
I think I've already spoken my piece, and I appreciate your response. I'll let some of the other commissioners bring it up.
I think it's appropriate. Commissioner Hinckley, next.
I'll echo a lot of the same as Mr. Sassen. But I will start by saying I do appreciate you all being here. And I know you put a lot of effort in this course. There's a lot of detail in this entire presentation. But as Mr. Sassen has said, there's a lot of effort put into the codes and standards we do have in place to let one group come in and change those is setting a precedent that I don't think is appropriate. We need to be consistent as a city. We need to enforce standards across the city. And I don't think by, you know, I think if you had, if you were asking for one or two changes and there was a viable trade-off, the city was getting something in return that benefited the citizens, I could see that. But for this instance, I just think there's way too many changes for these proposed properties. Additionally, I think that having the three separate locations as one PUD, they're totally separate, may, it's kind of awkward. And additionally, with what, along with Richard, helping your case would be having exactly what's going to go in there. Right now, we don't know. We don't, you're saying the one that we may have residential, we may have, you know, we really don't know what's going to go.
There's no residential component in any of the planned sections. In PH2, the comprehensive site plan that you're looking at there is what specifically is proposed. Could we dial up another picture? So the A-type buildings that I've addressed, this would be the typical footprint and elevation of that A-type building. It's a really neat concept. It can accommodate anything from the local insurance agent to the dentist, the lawyer. But then behind the building, you've got this roll-up door and shop area storage. Are y'all familiar with Garage Ultimate and the Benzey Garage, Nick Deutch's garage concept that he's done over there?
Most of us are.
Right. Imagine being a professional or a businessperson or wanting to have your office and be able to have that concept hung on the back of your front office instead of having that be a separate issue over there. That would be the type of tenant, the type of owner-occupant that we would be targeting. Not to say that a cabinet shop and an interior design company couldn't join forces and actually use a facility like this, but that wouldn't be our target. And if you could scroll back one more time to the overall site plan, what that building is there for additionally is to screen the type B and C buildings that are behind that. So that whenever you're looking at the intersection of Hope Village Road and the Timber Creek driveway, you've now got the expanded four lanes, a dramatic landscaped entry that landscaped all along either side that will terminate at the new Rod Iron, Timber Creek Rod Iron Gate that is set for the entry with a heavy landscape program against that. And then the type C buildings that you see going down the remainder of the Timber Creek driveway will have the green, seamed roof with the Koopa treatment and the same tan sides to blend with the scheme that is that anchor, that Timber Creek Golf Club. This is the program. What this, what the dilemma has been is that the rules do not attend to setbacks and lot lines and stuff on a building. The Fire Marshal has critiqued this and given it his blessing, but the rules and the types of uses and the setback situations in addressing private driveways and not public roads are part of what this is remedied with. This is hooked up, ready to go. This could stand alone on its own PUD purpose. But what we were trying to do was try to accommodate the panhandle and then incorporate with that some ability to plan for future purposes at the same time trying to accommodate a market which is much different out there than what you've got in the downtown district. It's a different world. And trying to meet or exceed expectations that you would have here in the downtown district, quite frankly, just don't apply and shouldn't apply to what's going on out there. So it's, I appreciate your concerns, and you're doing what you need to be doing, your positions. But it's probably something that we should have workshopped with you before we came with the formal application and process. This is something that's going to be good for everyone, and it will be an enhancement, but we've got to figure out how to address your concerns.
That's fair, sir.
Well, I'm telling you, the building right there is beautiful. If you did build up- If, if you did build that building, I would, I'd definitely look at it and be a potential customer for my business, but-
Can I, can I-
Go ahead.
Look, get your car here.
But, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you honestly, that would not sway my position on a PUD, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I think, is there another one to roll up there? So this is existing Industry Park. This is, this is in the can, already built, but we've asked to come back and put that in. The, the, so the building to the left is that kind of type A building. The building on the right is the existing E Squared building, where they were labeled with additional parking over and above city requirements. All I can do is, is give you assurances and promises and try to live to meet those. But to address your concern that, with this a subsequent stakeholder, or, or the next developer or something, come in with these rules and play, I understand. I understand, and I appreciate that. What I think is possible is to be able to drill down on that enough to be able to get it into a shape to where it would be acceptable both, for both of us.
But ju- just to reemphasize, all the things you're talking about up there have the word conceptual on them. So they're not binding. The only thing that is binding is the relaxation of the codes. And that's the, really the net result of what comes out of here, is that the codes get relaxed, and maybe we'll do this. And, and that's my concern. I suspect it's also shared by some of my fellow commissioners. That, that the only thing we're voting on is to relax your standards, to have lower standards than every other part of Friendswood today. And, and nothing that requires any of these very nice plans and, and things that you're showing, which would likely be acceptable to us, but they're not binding. The only binding thing is relax the standards and trust me, or whoever develops this property, to do the right thing.
Yes, I would, I would use the word flexible more than lower. But I appreciate your point.
Okay. Commissioner Hinckley?
Excellent vision, but we need the plan to go with it. So that's, that's where I stand.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
You bet, you bet. Anybody else?
Commissioner Park?
Yeah, I, I would echo a few of the comments relating to how much you've done around this place. And, and, you know, when I look at the scope of what was in the largest backup package I have ever seen for a meeting, maybe I haven't looked at them all, I don't know. But anyway, I, I mean, I, I would dare say, kind of audacious, really. I, I've never seen a PUD that spreads across a non-contiguous set of properties, for one thing. I don't know how to deal with that. It seems to me that your, your Phase Two-
Drawing, what is it called?
PH2.
PH2. Your Phase Two stuff is a lot closer to being a, a realized, you know, and a passable PUD, if you will. You know, bring up a PUD that did that. That's something that is a lot closer than having these, these ill-defined ideas and plans for the, the rest of the area. My, my, my closing comment would be that this is, this is a great idea, and frankly, I am, I'm glad that someone's thinking about it, and I am, I'm super impressed that you've, you've, you know, connected all the dots and done all this work and, and tried to tie this all together. But it's premature to bring here and, and expect us to, to pass it across those three tracks.
Got you.
Commissioner Man?
Everybody's kind of said a lot of what I was going to say as well. I'm excited about your vision. I think it's going to be outstanding. But it's, it's premature from here. I'm charged with making sure that everything's done in accordance with the way it needs to be done, and the PUDs kind of go outside of that. You know, you were saying, we could put this in PH1, we could put some housing there. But by us doing this PUD, that housing could go in PH2, that housing could go in any of these places. So I, I, you know, like we, we've said before, that PH2 looks like it's all set up, and it's ready to go. So let's kind of organize and get down to that one, and then work that and kind of work through these as we go along. But I think for a PUD, we need a compelling reason. For this reason, we need this. For that reason, we need that. And maybe I'm just simpleton, but it's a little bit cart before the horse, and so we can work, we can work through that. But I'm excited about your vision. I'm excited about that whole panhandle and what's going to end up happening, because I think we will work with each other and get through this. So I, that's all I've got.
Okay, so down, down to me.
Yeah, yeah.
And I had the benefit of listening to all these comments, and I know it comes a little bit, doesn't help you any. It does feel, I'm sure, like we're raining pretty hard on your parade. But it's not our intent. I think what you heard up here is that everybody is very excited that you're working to do this. That's an area that needs development. As you put in your application, it is somewhat of a partial gateway into the city of Friendswood. So you've, you've done good things in the city of Friendswood. And, but also, as Mr. Commissioner Sasson has said, the zoning goes with the property. And we had to always appear, we had to be very cognizant of that. You talked a little bit about highest and best use, and you're absolutely right. That's important, especially when it comes to an appraisal value thing. But for planning and zoning, we have to go beyond that. We have to look what's in the best interest of the community. What do people, the neigh, other neighbors, the other businesses around you? What, what, you know, we can't impact them. What's, again, what's the expectation of, of the community? And we bring that as a planning and zoning commission to, to look at that. Not just your property, but the, the neighborhood around you, the neighborhoods around you, and the people that live a mile away that want to use your services. We're trying to put ourselves in all those different shoes. So, so we, we can't just look at highest and best. I just wanted to make that point to you. I'm sure you get that. You've asked for a lot of variances, a lot. I mean, you're just about created a, you know, planning and zoning ordinance of your own within the city of Friendswood.
Sort of.
Yeah, yeah, again, and, and I know in preparing for this meeting, and you've been working on this probably a long time. I, I know you read our ordinances, but for, I just want to make, bring this call back to, to the black and white. A PUD is a unique zoning classification and shall be granted only when the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council determine that the applicant has submitted a complete application containing sufficient detail. And what you're really hearing tonight from the other commissioners and myself is that we just don't feel like there's enough detail. You're fairly far along on PH2, as you've heard, and as you've shown us on, on your drawings. And I think, you know, when we have something more concrete like that, you can help us understand why, hey, under this circumstance, this is why I need a little variance here. This is why it doesn't quite fit in the current ordinances. And, and again, to your point that out there in the panhandle is not the downtown district, we, I think we understand that, and I think we, we would work with you. But again, these ordinances are not just downtown, they're all of Friendswood. And we've done lots of PUDs. And sometimes, as others have said, at times people think we, at City Council, even think that we've done too many, and brought them too many PUDs. But we think there's a, there's a place for that. And there are circumstances, and there's like seven criteria of when a PUD is appropriate. And I'm not going to take the time up this evening and have you stand there while I recite all seven of those. But, but you, you're familiar with them, and I'm sure your engineer is familiar with those. And we look at those, and say, okay, how does this property fit into that? And we're having a hard time with yours. That was my general comment. I have some specific questions that I want to go through to make sure I, I'm looking at this fairly for you. So hang, hang there just a second longer.
Okay.
I, I appreciate you, you doing that.
All the time you need.
Well, I appreciate that. In your application, you made reference to surface encumbrances. Specifically, the original 1937 lease still exists over and under the entire Panhandle area.
Yes.
And unless modified by a subsequent surface use agreement or ordinance, the city, sorry, the surface encumbrances still exist. I, I want to, I think I can assume some things, but I would love to know, what, what do you mean by surface encumbrances?
Okay, so the exhibit that's up there now.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So there's a dashed yellow line that cuts out through the middle of the picture and then takes off diagonally across the course. Okay, that is the most westerly limits of the Webster unit. The Webster unit is what Exxon, back when they still controlled the field in the, in the early seventies, unitized what they considered was going to be the, the final condensed area, if you call 4,000 acres condensed, of, of the areas that they would concentrate their production within. That did not relieve the surface encumbrances of the original 1937 Umpire Oil and Refining Lease that they did not abandon. They just performed a unit, made an agreement with the stakeholders out there, and then, so this just gave them a way to figure out how the one well producing on the north 4,000 acres was going to pay a, a royalty holder on the south 4,000 acres. But everything outside of that unit, plugged and abandoned wells, and old retired, still buried in the ground, infrastructure was left. And what was also left was the surface reuse privileges of that original lease. So unless you were able to get, or were able to negotiate a, some relief in that surface use agreement, and are elected to build surface structures out there that by ordinance would placate that original surface use agreement, you might have some encumbrance that might give your bank, your lender, or your title company some pause. The entire forest of Friendswood is built over that 1937 Umpire Oil and Refining Lease. But the city's ordinance placated the ability, so the title companies were able to delete that exception to title and not show that there was an encumbrance on that, and the lenders and the end mortgage companies were happy.
So your encumbrances are legal encumbrances?
Legal encumbrances as far as title.
I, I wanted to make sure I understood.
Physical stuff that's there, there's only two wells all the way up in the northern portion of PH3 that are still there, that are shut in, that will come back and activate. But that's the only two live wells that are left out there.
But, but even, okay, so rather than ask it as, as a statement, let me ask as a question. What's your thinking as you develop this PUD for building on top of plugged and abandoned wells?
Never. I do not build on top of plugged and abandoned wells. Get close, pull everything out away from them. Just like whenever we built Timber Creek Golf Club originally. There, there, there's plugged wells at the bottom of lakes. There are plugged wells adjacent to facilities out there, but nothing has, is built over a plugged well.
Right. What would you consider to be a reasonable distance away from that plugged well not to build anything?
What, what I've, what I've already done in, in, specifically in Industry Park, was designated a fifty-foot setback from the plugged wells for vertical structures, for, for buildings. But as far as utility runs, paving, parking areas, whatever, that's over the top. Now that is, that is contained in a surface use agreement that I, I modified between ourselves and Denbury.
Got it.
Okay, and, and then what, what, what we have chosen to do, and what we have set aside, we have imposed on ourselves a fifty-foot setback from a plugged and abandoned well. It makes no sense for the city to deny itself ad valorem in, in creating tax base by offsetting from a plugged and abandoned well the same distance that you would carve from a live producing well. So that's, that's the point that we've made here.
That, that's fair. I may know too much, but, you know, I was thirty-nine years in an oil company, so-
You know exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, but I, we would have never gone below seventy-five foot, ever. Never did, to my knowledge. But you're going within fifty feet, because if you ever got to access that well, you need to bring rigs and structures and equipment in. But that's between you and, and Denbury, or whoever the, you know, the easements are granted from, so-
Well, remember, the plugged and abandoned wells lie well beyond what is now the, the final limits of the Webster unit. And that there are plugged wells out there that we come to the front door and we tell you where they are. You've got stuff around town that God knows what's built over the top.
You, you know more about plugged and abandoned wells than I'll ever know.
Right, right.
So I, I, I just wanted to understand what your thinking was.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to, I, I'd like to get your, you, you skirted on it, and I don't want to make you repeat yourself.
Oh, I don't mind.
But, no, no, but I wanted to make sure that-
If I could remember.
I'm giving you a, a kind of a softball here. In your application, you stated that, you know, additionally, the, the lack of lodging in any caliber is directly correlated to the absence of nearby restaurants, neighboring shopping centers, primarily because there are no neighborhoods.
Right.
It was hard for me to tell what kind of businesses or uses that you're really intending to attract. And again, as we stated very clearly multiple times, that the zoning and the variances go with the land, not with the person. But I would be interested to hear your thoughts. What kind of businesses, and especially for PH2, which you think, you seem to be further along on, what, what are you trying to attract there?
Could I see the PH2 plan again? I'll read you on that. Thank you. So Industry Park, which was the, is, it planted in the can, and we're building in it right now next to the city's regional water plant.
Yes, sir. We're familiar, very familiar with it.
So what do you do next to a, a city regional water plant next to a lighted driving range? You build Industry Park. And then, and then as you come forward, and our approach in over thirty years of development has been whenever you've, you've, you've got available land, and you, we choose to build from, from, from back to front. And to, and then with every subsequent section that produces, to try to accommodate the aesthetics and make sure that the front door is, 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 can never be offended by what's coming at it. And at some point, when we finally reach the hard front, then the obligatory major branded gasoline with fast food co-anchor, or just the, the fast food restaurants, or the pad-type facilities. I mean, this 2351 is basically a food desert. But the sharp play would be to go after a gas convenience on a corner, or to go after a drive-through fast food facility. It's, it's to create value by approaching from the back, building to the front, and then enhancing that in the process. One thing about my neighbors, and there was a remark about being, you're charged with protecting the, the integrity and addressing the concerns of the neighbors. And, and absolutely, there's, there's nothing that we've ever done out there, and there's nothing that we ever will do out there that won't first and foremost immediately address the concerns, and, and in every attempt, value-enhance our neighbor's property in the process. Whether that be just from raising property values because of something's thrown by, or, or shared accommodation of utilities, or offering by, by way of this plan to be able to give them a direct avenue for developed drainage into the closest watersheds by using the facilities that we will be installing. For instance, could I see the last page on this? Just to address your point, I think it was, I call it the Frankie Carter Park exhibit. This, this is, I think it's all the way up to the end? Yes, this one. This is PH1. This is where the residential component was, was abandoned. And it is the only section of the PUD that was required, that was requesting a residential component. Two and three aren't asking for it. But this, the shaded piece of property is Coastal Bend property, and that dashed yellow line over there shows you the actual location of the hike and bike trails of Frankie Carter Park as they trespass on and off of our property. Okay, so we've always had a handshake agreement with the park is that you don't send any sprained ankles our direction, and, and we're not going to make a big issue about your use of facilities. But it's come to the head, and primarily when Ms. Hutchinson showed up with the Buckner Track, which, that little 5.4-acre track is the last 5.4-acre tracks out of what was an original 909-acre Jones estate from a hundred years ago. And that had still eleven undivided interest owners in it, I believe. And she was able to corral them all and put them on the same page. And now that track, for the first time ever, is, is, is viable and sell. But, so we had invited track number three, and initially, we thought they were going to be a part in the first draft of this, of this, of this PUD. So that, that actually would have had to address the idea of this stops and starts, is that one and two would have co-mingled and actually joined with each other had that track stayed in. And, and then three would have been separate. But we've already got the right of entry addressed with, with, with Precinct One, and we're going to go in and locate the, the corners. And so that we will be able to work out a swap deal with Frankie Carter Park, not for our benefit, because I do not intend to develop this piece of property. I intend to sell this piece of property to, to go in concert with the development by either one of my joiners. But at the same time, I will furnish for them an avenue to take developed drainage- But at the same time, I will furnish for them an avenue to take developed drainage pursuant to the adopted regional drainage plan that the city has adopted for the Panhandle area to be able to take that developed drainage across the top of that track, probably follow the course of the hike and bike trail into that nearest Ox Bow, which is an old tributary of the main Clear Creek. And in doing that, I will retain those perpetual rights and ability to make those improvements and give the park back the land that they're already occupying anyway. So these are things that we're going to do, we're going to continue to do, we're going to continue to work and value enhance the Panhandle, we're going to continue to grow the city's tax base. What we were just trying to accomplish would be a vehicle that would let us get there faster and more efficiently. And you have to remember, I'm not getting any younger. So which in point might be a reasonable point for concern because, you know, I don't feel as well as I used to. But at any rate, I want to thank y'all. I want to thank you for hearing us. I appreciate your concerns. I understand them completely. I don't want to abandon ship this ship. I want to come back to you and I want to try to figure out how we can gain a comfort level.
Okay. Well, I'm not done, so give me a second. Sorry. But we might as well get these points out now because if you're going to do something like that, then you know further what to address. I will actually skip over some of the ones that aren't as important as others. One of the ones that's very important to me is the permitted uses that you asked for. And I'm going to read just to make sure it's in the record properly. All permitted uses listed in the City of Friendswood permitted use table in the code of ordinances within the agricultural district, community shopping center district, industrial district, and light industrial district are permitted within this PUD that you've requested. So that's if I read it properly, together, sorry, together with food and beverage manufacturing, healthcare and social assistance and accommodations and food service shall be permitted by right. Okay, so I read that and just went, wow. I mean, so I start looking at, you could have a elder care facility right next to an industrial facility and right next to, what is it, automobile dealers, civil engineering, construction, motor vehicle towing facilities. You've asked for the world of being able to put anything next to anything. Now, you personally, I bet you wouldn't do that, but we can't do it that way. We have to approve it, as was said earlier, with where the land is and what could happen if something happened and you needed to sell this development, it would be there. But putting, I mean, that could be waste management, remediation services, right next to child daycare. I don't think that's what this community wants. No wonder I think that's what you're planning, but you've asked for that and you've made it so hard for us to side with you, even if we're excited about the development in the Panhandle. So that one is a big one to me. I'm concerned you've asked for too much with not enough detail. And you know what? I know what your drawing said and as Commissioner Assassin said, we've seen this before. People put up very nice drawings. Here's what we're thinking, here's our concept, and then they build something different. And in your case, you could put all these things together. That doesn't seem right to me. I think you've asked for way too much, in my opinion, too much latitude of all the exceptions you've asked pages of exceptions to the permitted uses. That's a huge concern. So that one is one I really, for me, want you to take back. I'm going to ask Aubrey a question. Got to get you off the hot seat for a second, but Aubrey, they had included in the submission was a PUD regulation matrix table that kind of asked for a lot of difference in heights. And again, as you said earlier, you're no longer interested in 100-foot requirement, but it's in there and that's what we have to vote on is what's in there. But Aubrey, just to make sure we're all up here on the same page, can you kind of give me the highlights of what the requested changes are of that matrix?
Okay, just the matrix. So there were, the setbacks were established differently than the city, than our city setbacks in that they were establishing interior and exterior, you know, sides of the property. City, we do have some setbacks, but our setbacks, our major setbacks are between different zoning districts. If you're within a same zoning district, the setbacks are minimal. The 100-foot height, our maximum building height in CSC and industrial, which is the two districts that this property is currently zoned, is 40 feet. There were no minimum lot widths or lot depths proposed and we do have minimums in ours and then lot size, the minimum was 10,000 and their maximum lot coverage is 60%.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, understanding what you're asking for. And you're requesting a full, as I understand it, a full exemption from the community overlay requirements from 150 feet. Right now, they go out to 300 feet. And you're saying, no, I'm willing to go 150 feet, but not past that. Can you explain why to me?
The, actually, the community overlay district doesn't end at 300 feet. If the cohesive land plan extends far, as far back as it goes with that, then the overlay requirements exist through the entire plat. The reason was to be able to concentrate and address the real concern. Unlike in the downtown district, unlike inside the existing city perimeter blocks where there could be a real concern because you have public dedicated streets and you have public rights aways and you have ingress that drives around, exactly like the shopping center that has the back of a building that's going to be visible from the major thoroughfare and all the attention being given to the aesthetics on the adjacent minor street. The concern with the community overlay district, as I interpret it, is as you enter Friendswood, that you be able to maintain that aesthetic effect driving through town. That will be preserved with the 150-foot setback as far as the screen, as much as it would be with the 300-foot setback because of our land plan that you haven't got a good picture of or comfortable with, that you've got enough detail. Worst case scenario is that that screen that I was asking you to envision, that box, that packaging with the ribbon on it, that's got all the aesthetic features that you would have more and not less of in our development plan. And with added emphasis back at the Timber Creek four lane entry again, for instance, the 150-foot ends before you even get to the type A building, but you can see what's demonstrated by both shoulders of the road and the landscaping and the attention that's given terminating at the entry at the new relocated Timber Creek gate with a dramatic statement in landscaping and green space treatment, far beyond what would be required as far as the ribbon that's also running across 2351 proper. Landscaping matters. Aesthetics matter. The last thing we want to have happen at the entrance of Timber Creek Golf Club or at any of our entry points in our developments is it for it to be disappointing or look bad or be ugly. So we're going to spend a lot of attention into that. So what we'll be doing is taking things beyond the limits of the COD, but then we want to replicate what you've already done a good job establishing in the median out there is to be able to lay that same scheme back alongside the shoulder of the road at the same time.
Okay. What's offensive to you about just following the community overlay district requirements?
If I'm screening a parking lot behind the buildings and you can't see them anyway, then I shouldn't have to spend a lot of money trying to make an ugly parking lot less ugly. If it's screened from view, if I can come up with a comprehensive plan and that association that I was talking about is going to be charged with being able to have these shared common areas. If I can bring all that into one ugly spot that's screened instead of trying to make a silk purse out of a sow's ear, that was the objective.
Okay. Now I understand better what you, I think what you were trying to do.
Yeah.
If you could repeat that because we won't be able to hear her on the recording.
She's just bringing up the point about the screening. I mean, what we're demonstrating, what we're showing, it is an industrial zone and if you bring that into a light industrial zone, we don't want an industrial-based development. We want something that is prettier and higher and less impactful to that. It is a permitted use. We don't want to take that ability to be able to go there. What we want to do is be able to expand and not have to rezone the use into something specific and then abandon that ability on something that we could screen behind the nicer stuff up front. And trying to attend to this ribbon of CSC or retail or whatever it's going to be called and then it's an arbitrary line, taking that back to where it makes sense, but making whatever's up there pretty and making sure that screens either by buildings or landscaping or fences or whatever for what would be going on behind it. And then it's not, and again, attending to fire and emergency services, attending to the ingress and egress requirements, all the utility components, but taking a plan back and trying to figure out how to accommodate COD parking lot landscaping requirements when nobody up on the front's going to see it doesn't make much sense.
Okay, I get it. But remember, just for clarity, it's more than just screening.
And overhead power lines and those kinds of things. We don't want to run overhead power and extend it back to the whole project, but once we get beyond that first 150 feet and we've been able to screen that, yes, we want to be able to.
And that's fair, but it also includes off-street parking and loading regulations, exterior lighting, some of those things fall in there as well.
Well, and let's be sensitive to who our neighbors are out there now. What exists there now and what do you want to try to put, drop in the slot between those uses that are there now?
And I think if you'd have came to us tonight, and I'm speaking just for myself, I would be much more inclined to follow where you're going with this if we had talked about just PH two and here's my plan for that, here's my vision and here's where these requirements don't fit this. There's no reason to have them go 300-plus feet maybe because of here's what the development is. This is, you know, industrial. You know, I would have been much more receptive to that, but based on the full amount of uses that you've asked to do that, that made me very uncomfortable because of all the things that could go there or be brought in or that makes me uncomfortable. And then the large amount, I mean, you took almost, you took a lot of the planning and zoning ordinances and asked for exceptions to them, many, 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 many exceptions, probably, you know, changing 3.5 parking spaces per whatever to four. Well, you know, why? And so those kind of things, if you could narrow that down, I think you would have gotten me much closer to being able to say, well, let's really consider this more seriously. But you just left too many open ends, in my opinion. So I've taken up a lot of your time and a lot of.
It's helped me too.
The commission's time. What we have now is, right now, is a motion to approve. What I've heard you say is that, and we're making a recommendation, we're, in this particular instance, we're making a recommendation to city council or not a recommendation to city council. So we have an opportunity and maybe I'm speaking a little out of turn, but we could, as we did in the other one, we could table this. If you wanted to come back to us with a different plan and narrowed it down and addressing these concerns you've brought, you know, you've heard tonight, I would be willing to consider something like that, but if it goes, we can vote and then you can make, you can do what you need to do.
What I think I made a serious mistake is not inviting the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider a workshop that we could have talked about these issues in advance and tuned it up. And I might have been a little bit presumptuous because I know it's in my mind. Can't blame you for not being there, I guess, but maybe that's an advantage. But if the commission would consider tabling the item, I would not be prepared to take it up at the next meeting, but certainly do want to take it up again as soon as appropriate.
We can table as long as 30 days? Does that sound familiar, two meetings?
Yeah, or you can just bring it back with a new.
Well, so this is his own change item. So city council's public hearing is scheduled for April 5th. So we have to have a recommendation to them before, so either this meeting or next meeting, we have to have a recommendation to go to council.
Or, well, if it's going to hit that.
Unless he withdraws his application.
And I understand entirely if you have to send a less than sterling review to council. Time is of the essence, but you can't rush something before it's due. I understand your positions. I appreciate your positions. Honestly, I find a little fault in the strategy that I should have asked for a workshop with you guys.
And we've had people come and present to us before, just introducing ideas and allowed us to talk through some of it. Others have done something similar to that.
The only other process, I mean, there's not a legal proceeding for that. A conceptual plan would have been the only other option, but the commission couldn't approve or we can't approve or deny a conceptual plan. So, I mean, this is the process. They can't do workshops.
Well, we've had discussions, we've had people come in and talk to us.
At this time, if it's something that could be tabled until the next meeting and at least we could make an appearance to or devise something between now and then, but it's going to take longer than the next two weeks to put this together again.
Okay, but then your risk there is that it's, it sounds like it's on the council agenda.
Yeah, it is.
And we've got to give them something, a yes or a no, or, and you're going to get the same kind of questions from them.
Well, there's also the possibility, I mean, believe me, I'm not interested in getting, inserting any wedges between planning and zoning and council. But the reality is, is that I'm not comfortable right now presenting where you, y'all have brought some things to bear with me. I think those are going to probably be recited again with at least some of the council members. No, I appreciate where you're at. I think, I guess I'm looking for a vehicle to sleep on this. To just to think of where we're at and then consider something for the next meeting that I would like to present to you.
Another option that I would, I mean, I would offer up is for us to take a look again at the Industry Part Two site plan as a site plan and identify the deficiencies and see where, you know, the methods that we have already in place that we could get you where you want to be, just with a site plan approval, just for Industry Part Two.
Right.
Because that would get you going.
Yeah.
That's your main goal right now is to do Industry Part Two.
Would that be, would that make any sense to try to bring in the adjacent track where if that program met with enough success that it could migrate over into the adjacent property?
I think we really, like, we could take that into consideration. I think we, and we can look at it, but I think the commission, they've got leeway and we have, you know, processes that we can make some adjustments and variances like within our codes. And so I think looking at one individual property and being able to consider, you know, all the aspects of that individual property, they have a lot more, you know, leeway in that aspect.
Maybe the easiest thing is what maybe you said is we'll table this to, I'm proposing and we'll make a motion to see if it gets any support or not, but we can make a motion to table this to our next meeting and then just like we did on the other item. And then you'll have time to sleep on it, decide, you know, you can withdraw, you can modify, and then we'll address it at that, or leave it alone, obviously.
No, no, I think if we don't kneecap any of our options by tabling tonight, then we'll come with something to you.
Yeah, you'll have time to think about it.
Early next week. Is that okay?
Aubrey, this may be an unfair question, but does the Industry Park?
Aubrey, this may be an unfair question, but does the industry park site plan not conform to the existing zoning? Are there exemptions required for it? Or or does it actually mean, the industrial zoning is is pretty loose, I think.
Yeah.
Industry part two?
Yeah. It's it's currently zoned industrial except for the part right on 2351.
It's more about setback line.
Yeah, it's.
And 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 private driveways as opposed to roads.
So as as Commissioner Matranga was saying, there's a lot of exemptions asked for here. So I think to minimize those and say, just, I need this one and this one. And and this is why I need this one and this one. It becomes easier. Right now, we're overwhelmed with so many changes and the unintended consequences of each one of the ones that we're going against. And so it's just, so so we can get that down to the bare minimum, what you actually need, I think you may find some favorable responses.
Sure, sure. I I got it. I really should have brought a workshop to you in front of this.
Okay, so Commissioner Assassin.
Once again, I'm getting good at this now. I would like to revise my motion to table this. We spent three hours and all we did is table things today, to table this motion till next meeting.
Second. Okay, so we have a a motion and a second, all in favor? Chose to be unanimous, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for marrying with us through all that. Okay, moving on to our agenda. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates.
Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, March 25th, and we'll have a repeat of these two items on that agenda. And then we've also got a few plaques that are going to be on that agenda. And then Thursday, April 8th would be the one after that.
Perfect. Communications are next. Commissioner updates. Do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to communicate? Suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments? I will start. Commissioner Clark?
I attended the GCCDD this past week and they did remove from the table and approved the Avalon Section 1 drainage plan. They approved a couple of contract expenditures, including Lindsay for $44,000, but 111,000 loads coming out of the Greenbrier area. Of course, things were severely impacted during the cold weather and stuff like that, so they kind of took a step back. It was a very quick meeting and it was especially quick because I I couldn't find my button to talk and they gave up before they got to me and I, so I never said anything.
Commissioner Hankley.
I don't necessarily have an update, but I will say, Richard talks about it quite often, but I drove through Imperial Estates. If you get a chance to drive through there, that's pretty impressive, so.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Assassin.
Nothing.
Okay, and and I have nothing this evening as well. So next are our council liaison update. Commissioner Hanks, or sorry, council member Hanks. Wow, I actually messed that up.
That's all right. So first off, thank you. And Dan, you really have put a lot of work into this and there's a lot of complicated issues out there. But anyway, good questions, good thoughts, good discussion. Council did make an exception to an ordinance. Aubrey, correct me if my my vocabulary is wrong, Mary Kay, you, for the victims of the recent.
Freeze.
Yeah, but there's a nickname they called it. Yes, or something like that, or Snow, Snowvid, or whatever it is. Of the recent freeze and so that people won't have to come in and and pay permit fees to get their plumbing fixed and all. So council did approve that. We are getting some things back to normal, as you can see with masks and all that kind of stuff. And so life may be returning to more normal until the locusts come or whenever that happens. But we are having spring sparkle the weekend, the Saturday after the Easter weekend, and so it will look like normal. So you can go out to Stevenson Park, bring your stuff. I think there's going to be a garage sale. Tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, the Fairy Tail Garden is having a, they're dedicating their latest fairy house that Hometown Bank is putting up in honor of Alan Rasmussen's mother, who passed away this past year. And so they'll be dedicating and putting up a new fairy house. And that has been a huge hit even during the pandemic. Lots of families out there with kids hunting for those trolls and those fairies, and it's been a really cute thing. Also, you were talking about the Kenton Harris property tonight, and I didn't know if if all of you knew Kenton Harris, he was here at some of the meetings. He passed away this week. He was a longtime member of the community. I mean, probably over 60 years. He's lived in Friendswood and I may have that really wrong. It may be longer than that. He was a beloved coach and teacher, great teacher and mentor to many. He was actually the first teacher I met when I started working at Friendswood High School 40 something years ago. And my classroom, I went up early to prepare and he was meeting with some football players in the classroom across the hall and they were acting a little rowdy. And he came over and was just a great mentor to many, many people. And so he passed away this week and it's a loss to our community. And as we were talking about that property, I remember him sitting in this chamber as we were deciding whether or not to allow that rezoning. And so, you know, so maybe that's why the developer wasn't here tonight as well. They may be engaged in that. Anyway, that's it. So thanks again, y'all. I'm so glad these two guys came back without any casts or limping after their trek up to five miles high or something, you know, close. It probably felt like that, right?
It felt like that. Thank you, thank you. Next are staff updates. Aubrey?
Sorry. DRC report for February was in your back-up material. We've still been a little skinny on DRC meetings, but actually this last Wednesday, we had three scheduled, one didn't show. But it was, we were all kind of in shock having three meetings in one morning. We're a little out of practice. But also, Mark did come with me and attend the CEDC meeting and we presented the future land use map to the CEDC. They are going to think on it and will consider, they'll discuss it again at their next meeting. They only meet once a month. I also emailed the future land use map to the Drainage District, to Joseph, to see if they have any interest in putting it on an agenda, just to make sure, you know, the month of March, we were going to try to reach out to all the other boards and commissions. FDEDC, we chose not to give it to them because they only have purview over the downtown. So like I said, just going through that list and trying to get through our yearly schedule. So that's all I have.
Aubrey, did the CEDC have any feedback about the tree ordinance? I saw that was on their agenda as well.
It was. I just presented to them and told them that we were working on it. I didn't have a firm ordinance to present to them.
Right.
But I told them, we would, we'll take that back to them once we have something.
So there was no feedback. It was mostly a one-sided conversation.
Yeah.
Great. Becky?
Uh, no, sir.
Mary Kay? Great. Okay. Thanks, everybody. The March 11th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.